The City Council Meeting will please come to order. This evening, we will present the Topeka Armed Forces Personnel of the Year Awards. Please rise for presentation of the colors and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Providing the invocation this evening is Major John Potter, Joint Forces Headquarters Chaplain, Kansas National Guard.
Please bow with me as I pray in my tradition. Almighty God and eternal Father, bless this gathering and allow your Holy Spirit to dwell here. Through Scripture and through the life of Jesus, you teach the value of sacrifice, devotion, service, and being faithful. We recognize the selfless service of our military community and their families. Bless them and the work that they do for others. Bless their marriages and enrich their families. Bless their efforts also in the cause of liberty and justice, here and also abroad. As there are times that test our faith and our strength and our resolve, holy God, may we always find our strength in you. Amen.
Please be seated. This is a special evening for the city of Topeka and the City Council because each year we recognize the Topeka Military Relations Committee and their work in recognizing the outstanding military personnel of the five units that are located in the city of Topeka. First, we have the committee that is composed of civilian and military personnel who work in putting this event together and in selecting the honorees. I would like to have the committee members please stand so we can recognize you. You know, there's some out there. Thank you very much. We appreciate your work. Each of the recipients has been interviewed by the city, Channel 4 station, and the video was shown up here during the presentation earlier, and then it will be shown on Channel 4 over about the next week. Also, we want to provide copies and background information and photographs to the recipients. Earlier this evening, we had photographs taken with the recipients and their families, and we certainly gave it an honor to be able to participate and recognize them in this manner. Now, we'll read the names and give a brief background. All of you should have received a program which provides much more detail about the work of each of these individuals, rather than go over all of that, which I hope you will read because these are outstanding people that have done a great deal, a great deal in the military and in their community. I will just give a brief overview of that for them. And the first recipient is Sergeant First Class Daniel Relling of the Kansas Army National Guard. Sergeant Relling joined the Army while a student at Russell High School, Russell, Kansas. He started basic training at Fort Leonard Wood in Missouri and completed advanced training in South Carolina to become a human resources specialist. He has been an active guard reserve since 1997. He was deployed to Iraq in 2003 and served as a squad leader for a supply group. He went to Africa in 2010 as Senior Battalion Supply Sergeant. Among his awards are the Bronze Star and Meritorious Service Medal. In the community, Sergeant Relling is a club director for the Topeka Blue Thunder Wrestling Club, which helps more than 90 young people learn about sportsmanship, dedication, and character. He's also been a coach with the Ken Perry Baseball League, and with him tonight are his wife Jess and sons Eli and Parker. Honored to present the Topeka Armed Forces Personnel of the Year Award to Sergeant First Class Daniel Relling of the Kansas Army National Guard. We have Gunnery Sergeant Max Coons of the U.S. Marine Corps. A native of Belleville, Kansas, Gunny Coons joined the Marines in 1996. His duty tours have included service in Afghanistan during Operation Enduring Freedom, and his assignments have included serving as an anti-terrorism force protection officer and also an assignment in Okinawa, Japan. In the community, Gunny Coons has worked with the Marine Corps Junior ROTC Program. He's worked as a coordinator for the Toys for Tots and raised awareness and funds for local veterans in the Topeka area. With him also tonight is his wife, Bev. It's an honor to present to you the Armed Forces Personnel of the Year Award, United States Marine Corps. Thank you and congratulations. Senior Airman Maria Garcia. Kansas Air National Guard. Senior Airman Garcia is a fuel system specialist for the 190th Air Refueling Wing, having joined in 2011. She was deployed on tanker operations in Southwest Asia and the Pacific Theater and will deploy again later this year. Senior Airman Garcia has been active in the community. She's been a leader in the Topeka Young Life where she mentors Topeka High students and helps raise funds to send students to camp. She volunteered at high school track and field events. She's worked in the point man ministry, helping correct, helping connect servicemen and women and their families with support organizations. It's a pleasure to present to you the Armed Forces Personnel of the Year Award from the Kansas Air National Guard. Petty Officer Third Class Kimberly Lawson, the U.S. Coast Guard. Petty Officer Lawson is a pay technician in the Coast Guard's Pay and Personnel Center in Topeka, supporting 60 catchments in Topeka and across the Midwest. She is often in the middle of the center's morale events, serving as an emcee of the holiday party. She also helps teach students at Lomond Hill Elementary School here in Topeka. Petty Officer Lawson originally was from Virginia. She completed basic training in December 2010 and transferred to Topeka after completing Yeoman A School. She received the Coast Guard Letter of Commendation. She's working on her bachelor's degree in communication at Washburn, and with her tonight is her husband. Honored to present to you Personnel of the Year Award from the United States Coast Guard. Petty Officer First Class Daisy Brown. U.S. Coast Guard Reserve. Petty Officer Brown came to the Topeka Pay and Personnel Center in 2009. Here, she helps Coast Guard members with the more complicated problems that come up and conducts training so her shipments can complete, so her shipmates can complete advanced requirements. Born in Cape Cod, Massachusetts, Petty Officer Brown started her Coast Guard career in New Jersey. She's become highly knowledgeable on all the systems used by the Personnel Center and was deployed to support Coast Guard personnel and administrative needs during the cleanup of the BP oil spill in the Gulf of Mexico. She volunteers for several local causes, including Harvester's Food Bank, helping hands human society and local charities. Petty Officer Brown is a daughter of George and Terely Brown of Topeka. Her mother is also a retired Master Chef Petty Officer of the Coast Guard. That's pretty special. Glad to present to you Personnel of the Year Award for the United States Coast Guard Reserve. Congratulations. Actually, I know that some of our guests may want to leave and not stay for the remainder of the evening, so if anyone wants to be part at this time, that would be perfectly fine to do that. Okay, I believe we have a presentation this evening. Mr. City Manager, you want to provide the introduction?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask Susan Duffy and Bev Hall from Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority to step forward and provide the service report.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Hall, and I'm the Board Chair of the Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority. This is Susan Duffy, General Manager, and behind me is Rod Miller, who was the past Board Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager. I want to just say that Sergeant Coons, we worked with him. The Marines in Metro were making the miracle happen on Kansas Avenue with the Miracle Parade with Toys for Tots. That is going to be our annual thing we do at Christmas time, and we had a challenge out there, and that challenge was met all the way to California with Marines out there stuffing one of our new buses. As soon as it got off the line, the employees of Gillig and the Marines had that bus stuffed to the top with toys. So it was our honor to participate with the Marines and Sergeant Coons. It was a joy. Thank you, everybody. We're thrilled to be here tonight and to be a partner in Topeka's community. You have before you our FY 2014 year-end report, and as you peruse through that, I'm just going to hit some of the high points in it. Over the last two years, we've really worked diligently to weave into the fabric of this city. We know we have a commodity. We have something that is extremely important to all citizens, and we want to make sure that we're taking every advantage we can of sharing that and getting the message out that the bus is for everyone to ride. So, for the last couple of years, and specifically this last year, kids rode free during the summer. Forty-eight thousand rides. That's a lot of kids going to school, going to the pool, visiting grandma, going to work, getting onboard with the babysitter, whatever it was. We were transporting kids from May 15th to August 15th, and we will continue to provide this service. We think it's important that parents know there is a safe alternative transportation for their kids to get where they need to during the summer, and we can provide that. So we're happy to be a real partner with kids and get them where they need to go. Riding a bus is a life skill. It really is. So we have partnered well with USD 501, and we provided 13,000 rides a month during the school year, getting kids to school. I would invite all of you to come out about 5:45 and see these kids getting on buses. They are like zombies. I mean, they are so, so quiet. And they get on the bus, and they usually take two trips to get to the school they need to go to. But Topeka West, Topeka High, Highland Park, these kids are riding to school. And we have middle schoolers that ride as well, and then we have a lot of elementary school children who are riding with their parents, getting on the bus to get to school. So 13,000 rides a month, and we just don't do that. We're in the high schools on freshman orientation day, and we're providing a how-to-ride for every freshman. It is a life skill, and we want them to know that and to learn it here. We are also at registration at the high schools so that parents can ask us questions. How, where do I catch the bus? Where does my student catch the bus? How many bus rides will it take? We want to make sure we're providing that information. We feel very pleased to be a partner with USD 501 on a variety of thank yous to the kids. We're handing out Gatorade. We're looking at them. I see you, you see me. We welcome you on the bus. We know you're riding our bus, and we want you to. So a couple of times during the year, we do the breakfast bars and we do Gatorade, and they love it, and it is our thrill to do that. Washburn, they are our new partner. The first year, we provided the rides. This year that we're in, Washburn is providing the rides for their students. And of course, you've seen the ICA bus, and so again, we're providing between 4,000 and 6,000 rides a month, Washburn students, faculty, and staff. Also, I'm sure you've traveled down the new Seventeenth Street, and you've seen those beautiful blue, Washburn blue, with the ICA bod etched on the glass, the new shelters. And it's not unusual to see a bunch of students standing in there, and a lot of them are making a trip to Walmart. We also, we've not been able to find anywhere else in the nation where there is a Chinese how-to-ride. And so our hat is off to Andy Vogel and the International House students and his wife for helping us put together a Chinese how-to-ride for these students. We also go over twice a year for all the international students, and we provide a how-to-ride. We're also on campus with our bus, trying to get students from small towns who don't know about us, who have never ridden a public bus, to say, "It's not a school bus. It's not a yellow bus. This is a cool, clean bus. You sit back, do your texting, read your book, look out the window, side seat, but get onboard, leave that car with the not-so-good engine at home, and ride us. We'll get you to class. We'll get you to that final." So we're really thrilled to be a partner with Washburn. Also, Topeka Library. We are thrilled to be a partner on the Big Read again, and so true grit. You'll see our bus drivers are dressed up and our other staff, and we have books on the year, all year, books on the bus all year long. So there's a little basket, and we put books and magazines. We started it with the Big Read two years ago, and it's been warmly received. I rode with a woman not too long ago who said, "I now have five books in my house. I never had books before, and when my grandkids come, there are books for them to pull off the shelf." That's what we want to do. We are that moving library for them to come and take these books. You know, I walk outside of my house. I live in College Hill. My neighbors are dropping off books all the time and magazines. We've got a lot of community members and call us, and we'll come pick up your books too. Westar, we'd like to thank them for the book drive they had. So again, we're reaching out and we're partnering with people in the community. Okay, so what else is going on? New fare boxes, pretty exciting for us. Instead of the kind of dumb fare box, now we have a smart fare box. That will allow us to do a lot of different things with our fares. We'll be able to work with companies to, they can swipe their card. Right now, Washburn students swipe their card. They don't need an extra card. They swipe it. There's the count. We know every month how many students rode, and that's the beauty of having these new fare boxes. Also, we'll be able to tailor different passes for different people, so we're looking forward to that opportunity. Camp Metro. Okay, we are Camp Metro. We have a summer camp. We have a camp director. We have camp counselors. What do we do? We go around and we help other camps ride us. You need to go to Gage Park? Ride the Metro. You need a place to eat lunch? Eat at the Metro. So we're really working with camps of all sizes, faith-based, city, county, it doesn't matter. You want to ride the bus? We'll come do a how-to-ride, and then the next day, we'll work with you to get your kids on the bus and get you where you need to go. Finally, our Lyft pilot program. As you know, we operate a paratransit Lyft program. Well, we've determined that a better way is to get them on the fixed route bus. It's cheaper for us, and it offers them more flexibility, and it's a lot cheaper for them because if we go one-on-one, work with them, and if they want to ride, they get to ride free. That has made a big difference, 2,400 rides just in the first year, so we're really proud of that program. Also, I would be remiss if I did not thank the city employees who work with us every day, Ron Raines, Kent Pelton, Bill Fiander, and Doug Whitaker. We've reached out to these city employees and their departments, and we are working well with each other. We have issues that just, it's hand and glove, and they know it, we know it. Transit is not an afterthought anymore. I think it's one of those first things that they think about, and we appreciate that, and I think we have a good working relationship, and I wanted you to know that. It's been very good to work with them, and we appreciate all the positive response we get from them. Overall, I want to say that we'll be back in April. You challenged us last year to come back and improve the quality of service. I believe Councilwoman Ortiz, you said, "What about night service?" And so for the last year, we've been working with our planning partners, and we will have a series of proposals to bring to you in April and discuss what we want to do here in the city of Topeka, and it will improve the quality of service that we are providing Topequans. So we look forward to the opportunity to come back and visit with you, and thank you very much for the opportunity to visit with you this evening.
Susan and board members, thank you very much. It's exciting to hear that report and all the new initiatives that you are developing and putting together, and we see, and I know many of us feel strongly, it's public transportation, and that is so important, an important part of our city, our community. There is so much that can and should be done, and you're really looking at it and making efforts in many of those ways. And Councilmember, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Sure. Susan, first, I want to say I think you're doing a great job, and thank you for always responding to whatever complaints, constitutional complaints that I have. I do have a couple of questions, though. You know, I'm a big supporter of the metro and public transportation. I just, just a couple of things. I just want to know how we can get the information out more quickly, and I don't know if we can do this by email. I work for DCF, and I know a lot of times when I get that information, I give it to our top head to run it, just like, for example, Families Ride Free, but we might not get it until like the week's halfway gone, or Veterans Ride Free, or you know, something like that. And so if we can just get that out there, or I don't know if there's a place out there that you've already said this is the week we've designated for that or whatever, even with the children riding free. You know, I try to get that to as many as my youth group people that I can because I think our numbers would be up if we got that information out in a more timely manner, and yes, they are using it. So I just don't know how we can do that and how the city can help as well, but I think that's really important. That way, the week of and the week's almost over, and we can get more riders. I think we're both striving for the same thing. I just think communication is a little bit difficult, and then not only that, also when I turn that in, it goes to the central office of DCF, which goes out to another set of people and set of people and blah, 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 and blah, blah, blah. So just wanted to know how we could do that, just food for thought. And then another thing is you've done a marvelous job on the shelters, and I think the one that I complained about at Six and Swagger, that one's being rebuilt, and that's awesome. It's great. It's awesome, but you still have that shelter over in Pine, Pine Crest?
Yes.
No, not Pine Crest.
But I know which one you're talking about.
Over on East 10th Street.
Yes.
And it's there, and people just want to make sure that we get walls in there so when they're waiting, they don't get rained on and blah, blah, blah. So how can we get those, that we have those old ones in there, that we can rebuild those? And again, find that community partner, that we can partner up with somebody that'll go in and do whatever, fix the glass or whatever. And last but not least, I'd like to know more information about your bike sharing because I thought that was pretty cool, and you didn't elaborate on that.
We'll be here the first of April for Bike Share. We kick off April 15th. You were right about the communication. We're a small, little staff, and communication was difficult, but standing behind me is Ronnie Murphy, and we have a product to market, just like anybody, like any private company, and we need to market it with social media and with advertising, and we will be doing more of that. And so we also will be starting on things two months earlier instead of the week before, and that is just something we knew was essential because a lot of it's word of mouth, but it's also just, you know, so many things flash before your eyes. Sometimes you have to see it three times. Also, we are proud that we did this year, calendar year, put in 37 shelters in this community. That was huge, and we thank our partners who actually did the concrete work in Brasco. Their shelters are beautiful. So we're on a roll. That one's on our list, and so we are thrilled that as we do this, we're also concerned about ADA accessibility, and we're working very diligently as we move to designated stops that people understand we're doing that so that we can ensure as much as we can, these are ADA accessible, not just for wheelchairs, for anybody who's walking, pushing a stroller, or pulling a grocery cart with them. So we're going route by route, and so we're just, we will be getting to that. It's on our list, definitely. Yes.
Pinrich, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just very quickly, because communication, we do have a minute, 18-second video that we would like to show, what we're showing people, our year-end review. You push the magic button?
Okay, we'll see.
All right. Very good.
Quick video.
Again.
Susan, what I wanted to say is the word that describes what you're doing with the Topeka Metro is momentum. You have got it moving. You have got it under top-of-mind awareness. Of course, there's always going to be challenges because when you're trying to move an elephant, it takes a little bit of time, but I want to say thank you. Thank you for your work.
But thank you for your support because it matters to us a great deal. Please let us know if you ever need anything, but we'll be back in April.
Okay, thank you, Beverly, Rod, Susan. Thank you for the presentation. We'll then proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Walgas?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Everhart?
Here.
De La Isla?
Here.
Man Speaker?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
And Harmon?
Here.
Councilmembers, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda. Councilmembers, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda. Following the meeting, there will be two short executive sessions dealing with worker comp and SORT plans. We will proceed then with the consent agenda, if the card would read.
A, are minutes of the regular meeting of January twenty, twenty fifteen, and there are no applications.
That is the consent agenda, your pleasure. Councilwoman Ortiz moves to approve. Councilwoman Schmidt seconds. Discussion, all those in favor vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved. Go to the action items. A is the lease purchase agreement for police vehicles.
A is approval of a master lease purchase agreement between the City of Topeka and U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance Incorporated for the purchase of police vehicles in the amount of eight-hundred-ninety-four thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and seventy-one cents.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The approval would allow the execution of a master lease purchase agreement. Mr. Kaufman, Chief Fiscal Officer is available to provide information on this item and to answer questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Mayor, members of the council, a little background on this process. It was started in December two thousand twelve to assist, replace the aging fleet for the Police Department. The governing body also approved one in two thousand thirteen as a follow-up. So, it was a three-year lease program. This is the third year of that proposal. This lease was included during the two thousand fifteen budget process and is budgeted for in the Police Department. It was recently bid out through the purchasing program. We had two bidders, Commerce Clayton and U.S. Bancorp. They had a sixty-day rate lock. For that sixty-day rate lock, the U.S. Bancorp was one-point-three-eight percent, and Commerce Clayton was one-point-four-nine percent. So, we recommend that you go with U.S. Bancorp based on their bid. The total payment is two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand a year, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, forty dollars and fifty-seven cents over three years. Total interest of twenty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. This also complies with the cash basis law and requires annual appropriation by the governing body. With that, I'll stand for a question.
Just a background point, approximately how many cars are we talking about here?
It's typically thirty a year. Chief Brown's also available if you want to answer any specific question.
That would be interesting to know. Puts it in the physical force, the physical idea of what we're doing.
So, Mr. Mayor, city leaders, we're looking at one Harley-Davidson motorcycle, one Chevy van for the CSI unit, plus equipment to go inside, three Ford extended cab pickup trucks with carriers for the animal control unit, three Ford Fusions for the Criminal Investigations Bureau for our detectives, seven police mountain bikes to refurbish the aging mountain bikes that we have, and twenty Ford interceptor utility vehicles. Those are the marked black and white units that you see out in the patrol of operations.
And with this, how close are we coming to pretty much updating and replacing all the old vehicles? This is the third year of the program. We're getting closer to achieving our goal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This should put us in pretty good shape. That's why I'm including the motorcycle, the mountain bikes, and the animal control vehicles, and the CSI vehicle. This should put our vehicle fleet in pretty good shape to where we just can maintain what we already have in place.
Other questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see down here that it says that the first payment is due February sixth of twenty sixteen?
Yeah. I think, Mr. --
Is that correct?
Go back to the, yeah.
Councilwoman Ortiz, that is correct.
You would explain why we're --
Why are we approving it, like, right now if it's not due for?
In the past, I believe the leases were, they were approved in two thousand, in the prior year, and we were having some accounting issues with figuring out how to book that. So, we moved up to the current year, and then, so the first lease payment would be scheduled for the following year.
So, do we buy the cars? We actually, we sell the bonds to make the purchases, but then, we start the payments at that? Is that what, in a sense, looks like?
Your Honor, once the, if the governing body so chooses to approve it, the, once everything is signed, that money would be transferred to a trustee who would then hold it, and then, as purchases are made, they draw down on that trustee account?
Good, that's helpful.
Well, the money that's being held, do we get interest off of that, or it's just being held?
We do. We, Councilwoman Ortiz, we do receive interest on that. And that would continue to accrue until the police make the vast majority of their purchases.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions, comments? Deputy Mayor?
I'm just glad to see us reach the third year in this process, and I would move approval.
Deputy Mayor's moved approval, and Councilwoman Elise La second. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have ten yes.
Ten having voted yes, lease purchase agreement is approved. Go to item B, resolution on SORT planning.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson describing the areas to be considered priorities for twenty fifteen planning target areas for future federal and city funding as may be allocated within the twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen city budgets.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The approval would confirm that High Crest and North Topeka West Neighborhood Improvement Associations, as selected by the Citizens Advisory Committee on December third, two thousand fourteen, would be designated as the SORT areas. I'm going to ask Sasha Stiles to come forward and to present information on this, but before she does that, I'd just like to recognize that Brad Reef would normally make his presentation, and he's available to answer any questions. But I believe that this may be Brad's last meeting with us. He is leaving to join the USGA Rural Development Group to, in a position, and he's served the city for about four years and has done a phenomenal job. We always get clean audits, which is a great thing when dealing with federal government, and he will be missed. But he's here to back up Sasha today on her presentation.
Okay, thank you. We'll save the hard questions for him later.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. You all probably are very familiar with this program, but to give you a brief overview, this evening, what we're requesting is approval of a resolution to formally designate North Topeka West and the High Crest NIAs and those neighborhoods as the next SORT project neighborhoods for twenty fifteen. Just some background, HND, Housing and Neighborhood Development advised the NIAs in May that there would be an application workshop in September of last year. The application, we received five, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. HND then received five applications. They were received in November after the workshop was held in September with the interested parties. In December, the Citizens Advisory Council met, reviewed, scored, and recommended the two neighborhoods and the NIAs for this year's SORT program. You will also recall that SORT is a multi-year program. It's three years approximately. In the first year, the NIA and the neighborhoods will go through a planning process with the Planning Department, and they'll actually develop a pretty comprehensive neighborhood plan and also identify a target area. In years two and three, then, the actual construction begins. You will also know and note that a large majority of the funding comes out of the city's capital improvement project funds, and then, a portion of it comes from the HUD funding for the housing rehabilitation activities that take place in those target areas. Of course, ultimately, our goal is to enhance the quality of life in the neighborhoods and improve the neighborhoods, including the property values in those neighborhoods. Success of the SORT programming is measured by changes in the overall health of the neighborhoods, and you will recall the neighborhood health maps that I'm sure you're all very familiar with is the way that we kind of measure our success in those areas. Based on data from the neighborhood element of the city's comprehensive plan, five of the first nine SORT target areas outpaced the city with residential property values, while eight of those nine areas improved composite health scores overall. So, I think you guys have a lot to be proud of in terms of these projects. And of course, these efforts would not be possible without the work and effort of all the committee members and NIA members that participate in the process, and of course, planning staff and HND staff. So, staff's recommendation is to approve the resolution. If you have any really technical questions, we'll get Brad up here to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation. I think we've all enjoyed and watched the SORT program through the years in different areas where it provides help. Are there questions, comments for Sasha? Let me do. There, okay, we do have a public comment. Someone has signed up for public comment, Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
Governing body, I'm presently the president of High Crest, and I made this presentation to the CAC. We asked for your approval, and of course, with the other NIA as well. And we are just finishing up the sidewalks that were done with the last one that High Crest received. And a lot of the people are really happy and thankful for those, and there's other improvements that we're going to look forward to making. And we've already had our neighborhood planner from planning at our January meeting. We don't like to sit around over there. We want to get things done. So, we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Elise moves to approve, and the deputy mayor seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution finding target areas is approved. Go to item C is applications. There are several.
We have one cereal malt beverage application for our tours at one-oh-five Southeast Tenth Avenue. Staff is requesting approval.
Councilwoman Ortiz moves approval of the application. And Councilwoman Hiller seconds. Discussion, all those in favor vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have ten yes.
Then, having voted yes, the application is approved. That concludes the action items for this evening. We proceed to the non-action items. Have a discussion point. Mr. City Manager, introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past two and a half years, and certainly for many people much longer than that, there's been an ongoing discussion about how the city can work more closely and more effectively with the neighborhoods. And Mayor, if we'll go back a couple of years, when you first were seated as mayor, you made reference to the fact that during your campaign and many meetings, the item that came to you was the need to look at neighborhoods and deal with crime issues and deal with improvements, and you laid out a challenge to me to do something about it. And I don't, I think it was probably a little more formal than that. But as a result of that, there were two neighborhood summits. There was a neighborhood task force that was created. There were many engagements with various NIAs and the CAC meetings. If you remember, about a year ago, we implemented a pilot program where we brought Captain Scott from the Police Department to sort of bring together some disparate and separated organizations, divisions within the city to work closer together with the specific objective of streamlining the process in which the community engaged with the city, especially as it dealt with code issues and development services issues and neighborhood issues. Also, to reduce redundancy, to reduce confusion in terms of how people interacted with the city. And most importantly, the focus was to increase access to the community and improve communication going in both directions, from the neighborhoods of the city and from the city to the neighborhoods. Where we're at today is we're taking the first step of formalizing that pilot program. I'm going to ask Ms. Stiles to step forward and to provide an overview of the restructured HND, specifically the creation of the neighborhood relations department officially. And then, also, next week, we would actually present the resolution for official action.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and council members.
There it is.
So, Mr. Colson did a great job of summarizing the history of the conversation, and I'm glad that he did that because he was here and I wasn't.
I'm going to ask you to speak over just a little closer there.
Sorry. Sorry about that. At any rate, so, you know the background and the ongoing conversation in the community about the issues and the customer service and communication from HND and probably code, code enforcement as well. So, based on the input received from all of these community groups, yourself and others in Topeka management, Mr. Colson in particular, worked with his staff to devise a plan to bring all of the property-related services together into one department. The goal is to achieve a more streamlined process and customer service experience for folks so that we hopefully are not pinballing them around from building to building, "Oh, you called the wrong place." Let me tell you who you really need to call. So, by bringing us all together in the same house, we'll have, we will have improved communication between the departments or divisions now, as well as hopefully produce a much better customer service product for the citizens and residents of the community. So, to go over the, well, our main goal for twenty fifteen, of course, is to provide the very best customer service that we possibly can, as well as engaging the entire community. So, our first division in the newly organized department is Housing Services, and I'm going to ask Cory Wright to stand up. She is your Division Director of Housing Services. Many of you may know her, and she's been working with Housing and Neighborhood Development for quite some time. She will be continuing to provide services related to affordable housing opportunities in the community, redevelopment of the neighborhoods as well as the programming that we have targeting homelessness and homeless prevention. Those services really don't change at all. Her major goal for twenty fifteen will be to analyze the programming that we are currently offering with the HUD funding and make sure that it really fits the community and what the community needs are. It's been some time since staff's taken the time to really look at what we offer and make sure it matches up with the need in the community. I'm sure that we'll be engaging other stakeholders in the community in those discussions to make sure that we're providing the very best that we can with the funds that we receive from HUD. The next division is Community Engagement, and you all know Monique Lode. Monique is your new Division Director of Community Engagement, and she has been charged with a very big job. She is going to be working hard to engage the entire community. We are very engaged with the NIAs and many of the NAs that are in existence, but there are many other neighborhoods out there in the community that are somewhat organized or pretty organized, and we're going to really be trying to get to know those folks and finding out what the city can do to probably not provide the same kinds of services that we would to the NIAs, but what can we provide? We don't want to leave anyone out of the conversation and make sure that we're doing the very best we can for all the neighborhoods in the community. In addition to that, Monique will be working on developing her major goal in twenty fifteen is to develop a neighborhood leadership training program. We have a lot of great leaders in the community at the neighborhood level, but as you all are aware, because you serve in that volunteer capacity yourselves, we have the same group of folks that we've always had. So, we'll be trying to reach out, pull in new folks into those conversations, and engage a new generation of volunteers to help us work on the good things and the bad things in the community. The next division is Development Services and Property Maintenance. Mr. Richard Faulkner is your Division Director for this division. Development Services is what we all would probably commonly refer to as the Building Department. So, if you need to get a license as a contractor that offers service in the community, you're going to deal with Development Services. If you need to pull a building permit for building a fence, building a house, or building a new commercial property, you're going to be dealing with Development Services. They provide inspection services, permitting, and plan review to construction activity in the community. In addition, Property Maintenance or Code Enforcement, which we're kind of trying to rebrand that as a little more positive. I think code enforcement makes people kind of go, ugh. So, Property Maintenance has been pulled in under Richard's supervision, and it fits nicely with the construction piece, new construction, and then, maintenance of the properties after they're built. And of course, you all know that code enforcement tries to protect property values in the community and ensure that people's properties are maintained in a healthy and safe manner. The big goal for Development Services and Property Maintenance in twenty fifteen will be to streamline the processes for abatement and maintenance. the processes for abatement and maintenance compliance issues. Really, development services is working really smoothly. What we hear most about, and I'm sure you all would agree, because you probably hear it more than I do, is the code enforcement and how long it takes to submit a complaint about a property and then actually have a resolution and something done about it. So we're going to be looking closely at the processes that we have. Of course, we have to operate within state laws, so we have to be careful that we don't tromp on folks' property rights, but at the same time, we're going to be looking for ways that we can streamline those processes and hopefully shorten up, tighten that time up a little bit so that folks in the community don't feel like nothing is happening with the property that is their issue. And, excuse me, finally, regulatory compliance. So Bradley Reeve, who is leaving us, is the division director for about thirty more minutes of regulatory compliance. Regulatory compliance is an internal service provider, so the function of this division inside of the bigger department is to make sure that we comply with all of the HUD regulations and we keep our HUD funding for the very important programs that we use it for in this community. And of course, the biggest goal for this division is successful completion of the update to our five-year consolidated action plan. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And it's exciting to hear the revisions and what's gonna be happening. One thought I had is, you know, we adopted the new international property last summer, I don't know, period of time, and at some point, I would be curious on how, what changes, you know, what changes have we made? I know we were going to get some more code compliance people and they were all gonna be trained.
Yes, sir.
How that is going? Is there training?
Yes, sir.
And have we see more, what, prosecution, anything happening in this area? Because I think that was the reason we did it, is to update. And you don't have to go into that tonight unless you wish, but I mean, at some point, I would like to have that type of report.
I can, I can give you a three-minute update if you're interested.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, in response to your question, we do have training ongoing. We have an internal staff person that's taken it upon herself to become the trainer. And she has already, she's actually the supervisor of those inspectors. She's already passed the certification, so she is now engaged in training her inspectors. And they will be required to pass the certification test for the International Property Maintenance Code. And you are correct, that was adopted July 1 of last year. We will be meeting next week, I believe, with the Neighborhood Task Force Group that is a subcommittee that is specifically focusing on the IPMC and code enforcement in the community. So we'll have a good opportunity to gauge the community feedback on how's it working. The other thing that I would quickly point out to you is that Richard has worked with the code department and the inspectors, and they've come up with a list of seven items that regardless of the complaint that is lodged against the property, they're going to be looking for these seven items to make sure that they're in compliance. And if you want more information on that, of course, I'd hook you up with Richard and probably not now. But we are, we are working on those processes and I will be happy to provide feedback from that task force subcommittee as soon as possible to the group.
Good, look forward to that. Council members, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Have we looked at grant writers to maybe help get any grant money for like cleanups or anything like that?
You know, at this point, what we are doing is taking a real close look inside of the newly formed department to see, do we have the people in the right places? Grant writers in particular has not been, not a thing that's come up for discussion, but it's certainly timely as part of our focus on, do we have folks doing the right things?
Thank you. And City Manager, I hope we would look into that because I know at one time we did have grant writers and it seemed to help in different areas. And also to teach some of the NIAs or different community people that don't know how to write grants to go out there and write those grants and get them. So I think it'd be very beneficial to us. The mural that's on at Nineteenth and Western was written, or was, that was, that paint and all that was provided by a hamburger helper grant. So there's money out there, we just, we just need to get it.
City Manager, you wanna comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ortiz, we are looking at that. It has been a conversation that we've picked up and looked at several times over the last couple of years. We've become convinced that there is a great opportunity that we're missing right now if we don't solve this issue. So, a little bit premature for us to outline how we're gonna address it, but our expectation is that we will have the grant writing capacity built into the city system as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you, Del, for the question. Councilman Brown.
Sasha, thank you for that presentation. I am impressed. I've heard some comments from the public, well, why are we renaming the department? It's just a superficial change of name. But what I see and what I saw in the presentations and heard is that this runs deep, that your intent is that each one of these divisions is gonna have new focus and specific goals, evaluations, and outcomes. So, I appreciate, in your short presentation, I appreciate you bringing that out, so thank you.
Other council members, questions or comments? Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, I'll be brief. And I agree with what Sylvia said, what Councilwoman Ortiz said, as a former grant writer with the 501(c)(3) and a state agency, that we do need to go after those grants. My question has to do with property maintenance now instead of code enforcement. And if I understand correctly, that was in the police department before and now it's in neighborhoods?
Absolutely.
The neighborhood development. And also, I wanted to know a little bit more about animal control, 'cause that is one of the, you know, I get some calls about animal control issues and how that's being handled.
Yes, go ahead. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The animal control is going to stay in the police department. And if you look at the model for code enforcement, property maintenance, it's really kind of a in and out of police departments and other areas. We looked very closely at to accomplish the streamline and the cross-training that we wanted to achieve ultimately within this program and build the voluntary compliance aspects of what we're trying to do, that the model fit best with doing it within the development services or in the HND area.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
Just a few comments. First, to the city manager, good job. I'm very impressed with her. I think truly Sasha, I mean, five weeks on the job to be able to do this presentation as if you'd done it for years, very impressive and thank you. Also, I really like the reorganization. I think it makes sense, the structure that does and pulling the things together that you have jointly and the way it looks. I do have a couple of comments. The first on my list was the same one that the Councilwoman Ortiz mentioned, and I'll maybe phrase it a little bit differently. I think we're looking at overall being a city of innovation and taking advantage of opportunities and not just looking internally at the city's resources or at a regular government stream, such as our community development block grant. So I too would really like to see grant writing somewhere. I've got two neighborhoods that want to do that, that have some objective, maybe three, and we don't really have anybody consistent in the city's network to help at this point. So I really think wherever it fits, I know that because of the turnover already in our, in our regulatory compliance person, you know, wherever you're thinking about it, that's certainly an opportunity. I'm not saying that's where it belongs, but somebody who can help us seek grants and manage them and really leverage resources that we have. Also, in terms of the neighborhoods, I really like the description that was up on the board. I had not seen that yet, but I really hope that we can focus on our neighborhood development, not strictly to meet the requirements of HUD guidelines for citizen participation and CBPG and other processes, but instead to be really focused on helping our neighborhoods identify what they need, go after the resources they need, be self-sustaining, not just following the rules that the city has set out, but very self-directed. I think that's a challenge, but I, as we start out on this new structure and you start out with building your department, I certainly hope that we can do that for our neighborhoods. The only other comment that I had was I did look ahead to the ordinance that is on the agenda for next week, and I didn't see even the kind of descriptions that you had overhead for the departments. And I don't know whether this is just to get us started, I would like to see us fully describe all of the departments in that ordinance, at least at some point, the divisions within the department. Also, there is the neighborhood rules and regulations. I understand what we've done is dubbed in the rules that were maybe supposed to be voted in back in '05. But I really, with the comments that I made about neighborhood structure, I'd really like to see, if not by next week, sometime, I'd like to see us structure that differently. The way that's written is just very dependent on the city. And I work with a lot of neighborhoods, I have them in my district, and I'd like a structure where they feel independent rather than like they have to follow the city's rules or they can't function, where they have to get permission to do things all the time. And it's evolved, that that's kinda the way it is, and I don't, I'd like to see us flip that so they feel more independent, they truly are. However, that would be applied.
Thank you.
I think it'd be helpful if you would provide us a copy of the slides that you presented, the, so that we would have those.
Absolutely.
Would be beneficial. And also, I think, I haven't met Mr. Faulkner sometime, maybe give a bio, I think he is new to the city, correct?
Yes, sir.
Within the last, whatever.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
We've never met him.
He got here in October, I believe.
Okay, so it'd be nice if we would, you know, have a background with, so we can become acquainted and be able, and be able to work with him. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I forgot, we've spent some time talking recently about some things within the department and the restructuring. One I forgot, and I hope this will be a focus in the next year, is we really need a reorganization of the Citizens Advisory Council, and I hope that's gonna be one of your priorities for the year.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions, comments? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Look forward to the changes and what all you're doing. We have one person signed to for public comment on this item, Mr. Ledbetter.
Governing body, I came out to discuss, I've got some notes that Betty Phillips, a long-term officer at High Crest and one of the founding members of the NIA, sent me. I don't have a lot of concerns, I would just say that each NIA is a little bit different. High Crest's been very innovative. We have to be. As many pressures as that NIA has taken with school closures and things that would've been incredibly adverse if we had not gotten involved and taken the bull by the horns, we couldn't have expected or gotten help from the city on those issues. We had to unify and take on those forces by ourselves. We had some support, but NIAs are gonna have to look within at times for their own leadership and find people that will work with them and work for them. And they oughta be getting some training in that, and that's out there, I know. But we've been fortunate, High Crest, we have had some long-term board members. And so, one of the things in this ordinance that concerned Betty, who else would do the newsletter except Betty? I mean, nobody wants to. It's hard enough to find a treasurer just to take the bank statements and read the bank statements at every meeting. You might wanna look at this and say, are you cutting your nose off to spite your face if you wanna limit people to three years or five years? I know council members aren't limited in such a fashion, so I question the wisdom of that, as does she. When I look at a reorganization chart, and I just looked at it today, and I'm glad it was sent to me, I look for position descriptions to kinda give me the flesh and bones of where this thing's really going, and maybe even a mission statement. And so, you know, that might be coming out someday, I don't know. But I'm not opposing this in any way, I'm simply gonna tell you some concerns that Betty She asked, why wouldn't you conduct the CAC according to Robert's Rules of Orders? Did everybody get one of these emails from Betty? I can make, in fact, I'm gonna make it part of the record just so that her concerns are placed on the record. Thank you. I, reorganizations can really accomplish a lot. Yeah, people have been calling me through this meeting too, but anyway, they also can just, you know, wind address a problem that's deeper and not get to the heart of the matter. So, we'll see what happens. I'm not gonna critique it ahead of time. I'm going to be an observer and see if this really works, if NIA people are truly engaged and if resources match the needs or even come close. But I can tell anybody that's ever worked with NIAs, if you've got anybody in that organization that wants to see things done, give them a little respect, 'cause it's hard to find these people. They, they don't grow on trees, it's not as easy as you might think if you don't have one of these NIAs that you represent. And to find somebody that's had long-term commitment like a Betty Phillips is just beyond unusual. It's incredibly great that that neighborhood has had her for as many years as she's been involved. Of course, she's got a park named after her now, but anyway, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That completes our non-action items. We will go to announcements. First, I would like to introduce some other special guests we have this evening. We have a Boy Scout from Troop 186 in Barrington. If you would stand, fellas, Tolan Sully, Storm Sully, Emma Johns, Robert Hurley are here tonight working on their citizenship in the community and communications badges. Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate your attendance. Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I have no announcements.
And normally, the invocations would be provided by Councilwoman Schwartz, so we start her first on the announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. I attended a ballgame last week at Shawnee Heights and they went to, the cheerleaders went down to Dallas the weekend before that, and they got fourth in the nation in a cheerleading tournament. And of course, my granddaughter's one of, is one of those cheerleaders, so I wanna shout out a big congratulations to them. Also, today, I went to the Capitol. I won't be able to go tomorrow to City Hall Day, but I will join the afternoon meetings. But I met with Senator Schmidt and also Representative Jones, and we talked about what the city had on, as their legislative agenda. One thing I learned today, and I wanna let the public know about this, 'cause I think this is a real concern, but, and Senator Schmidt told me this, if the local elections are moved to the fall, which is a partisan election process, military people will not be able to run for office. And I think that is really a discredit to our local municipalities to do that. So I wanna inform people of that, that that is one of the issues. We, I had Orion Jordan join me, 'cause we had talked about getting out the vote, the local vote especially. And one of the things that we started to talk about was mail ballots, as three other states in our nation do. And I think we could probably pursue that as a municipality issue. But I enjoyed my day at the Capitol, it'd been a while since I'd been back there, and I encouraged everyone, and I am going to contact Facilities Management, 'cause three people tried, that joined, not were with me, but at the same time tried to enter the building, we could not find the door to get in. And I kept thinking, wow, this is really not nice for our state Capitol to have people walk around the building, try to find the door to get in. So I will contact Facilities Management about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is an issue on our legislative agenda, concerned about the elections. Councilman Schmidt, Councilman Harmon, Councilwoman Hiller.
One item for the city manager, I am, as I said, I'm very excited about the neighborhood relations reorganization. I know that another one of your priorities has been constituent services, and there's been a lot of motion in terms of our constituent services staff and structure, and if there was a way to kind of give us the picture of similar to the one today on constituent services soon, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Mr. Brown. I, I just, she didn't choose to speak tonight, but I just wanted to mention that the Vice President of the North Topeka West NIA is in attendance since her neighborhood was one of the areas under consideration. I, so I want to thank Paulette English for coming out tonight.
Please make her raise her hand.
I have to make you raise your hand evidently.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out and Teresa Miller couldn't be here because she's ill tonight. I just wanted to suggest to Sasha that you make sure that Brad files his last regulatory compliance report before you let him go in a few minutes. And also, I can thank him myself for all the work he's given to my neighborhood since I've been working with him, it's much appreciated. And then, a couple of quick things, Sasha mentioned this, the Neighborhood Task Force, which is a working group committee of the Citizens Advisory Council, will be meeting February 18th. And I would encourage any citizens who are interested in seeing other citizens make a difference in Topeka to come and sit through that meeting. Your comments and suggestions, I'm sure will be welcomed by that committee. They have a number of things going on that night. Chief Brown is going to be there and giving a presentation as along with the new director of Neighborhood Relations, Sasha Stiles. There's going to be information on code compliance and several other things, so please come out for that if you can. And then a couple of things I just found out about today, there is a fundraiser for a little girl who's eight months old, it's called Hope for Heidi. And it's a chili feed and raffle fundraiser, it'll be on February 6th, it's being sponsored by the Sunrise Optimists. And I can provide more information if anybody wants to know. And lastly, the Center of Optimists again in North Topeka are going to be having a pancake feed on February 14th to benefit the boys' basketball program for Logan Elementary. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Brad and good luck to you, Brad. Brad's done an excellent job with the neighborhoods, it hasn't always been easy, he's taken some punches, but he's handled himself in a professional manner, so I just want to say good luck to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Everhart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too wanted to congratulate Brad and tell him I hope he enjoys his new position because I think you've been, you were such an asset. And I, throughout my tenure here, I've really appreciated the knowledge that you shared and if ever I had an issue, you, you were right on it and would, would get it fixed for me and I really appreciated that and I, I, like, like I said, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you. Councilwoman Delisa?
I echo the sentiments. Brad and I have been working together for several years and you've always been on point, on task, and I appreciate everything that you've done for our city.
Thank you. Councilman Man Speaker? That completes the announcements, we will proceed to public comment, we have two persons to speak. Bruce Deal. Bruce Deal, in responding to Joseph Ledbetter.
Governing body, I just want to say it was good to see those marine uniforms in the audience tonight, always liked the backup. Brad, I appreciate your, your work. You've always been helpful with High Crest, you always return my phone calls and emails very promptly, I always appreciate that in a public servant. Want to talk about a new group that's been formed called Citizens for Accountability in Government. We're going to be very active in the next year, I believe. We've had four meetings now. I hope everybody got a set of our recommendations that was emailed, we emailed it to Brenda, she's very good about sending those out, usually within a minute. I get it back as like, it's already sent. I appreciate her diligence when, when I ask her for things. I'm going to go over those. We've also asked for a meeting with the mayor, he has graciously given us a meeting next Monday at 10:00 a.m. I've had four or five people that promised they would be there if we got it set, so I've notified Carol Marple, who's going to get those notices out. I want to let the public know, we will be having a forum at the Public Library. You need to get there early because it's limited seating and we'll of course reserve, I think it's going to be about 10 seats for the candidates. We're going to operate a very fair forum because that's the hallmark of how I do it at High Crest and we will have a forum for the High Crest candidates, or I'm sorry, High Crest, they are in High Crest, the District Four candidates at High Crest, the NIA, in March. But I want to focus on this new group because it's very important that we have accountability in every part of our government and every part of the money, which includes sales tax and especially includes economic development. And there's not going to be a black hole anymore where that money goes. We're going to have accountability, we're going to have transparency, and it's going to happen. And the, the remarks that we don't have to tell you where things went, we don't have to tell you where this money's going, we don't have to be accountable for it, we don't have to have any benchmarks for five million years, that's going to come to pass. It's going to be gone from the vocabulary of Go Topeka. They are going to start answering where this money goes. And if that's uncomfortable, I'm not going to apologize for it. I went back and looked at notes, I did, four years ago, I was asking for the same thing, accountability, why are we transferring millions of dollars to the Chamber of Public Funds? It was just like I'd read it yesterday and none of that has changed. So now there's a group that's going to demand change. At the JDO agendas, the first thing we're asking for is that they be out to the public 14 days before any JDO meeting. We're going to ask that the JDO slash Go Topeka budget be out to the public 60 days in advance with public, with a public hearing on it 30 days in advance of that budget, so the public can have input finally. We want a mechanism for public input into the JDO agenda formation, which would allow any citizen to present an item to the chair, which this year would be the mayor, 30 days in advance and that those items would be taken up at the beginning of the JDO meetings and discussed and placed on the agenda or not placed on the agenda.
Would you like some additional time?
Two minutes would be fine, I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown moves. Delisa seconds. Discussion, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have nine yes?
Nine yes, please continue for two minutes.
Thank you. The JDO minutes, rough draft of those minutes, need to be posted within 14 days after the meeting. And even though they're not approved, at least we have a way to track what was done at those meetings, so the public can see what was done at those meetings if they weren't able to watch them. They will say rough draft on them. But it's, it's very interesting in watching this, how the city side will be much more responsive in the years that they have charge of the meetings and the county will drag feet, refuse to listen to any innovations, and it's, it's a pattern. And I for one am tired of it. I just send the city rant it all the time and, because I, I always get quick response from the city clerk. And the public knows, you notify the public, the city clerk, and it's very easy to get on the agenda. With the county, they've changed it several times. I was not satisfied with the answers of the county counselor at different sales tax meetings this year, where he called people nitpickers and called people names. I've never seen that out of city staff and I don't appreciate it as a citizen.
Yeah, I do want to remind you not to make comments about individual persons, that would be, thank you.
Okay, I won't repeat that tonight. Thank you. Anyway, it's time that we had some change, it's been long enough, we've waited patiently, not just me, but others, and we want to see some change implemented this year. And so, I do want to make sure the candidates feel invited to those forums. We're not going to just talk about accountability, we'll ask questions about taxes and things like that. And it'll be very fair and everybody will have a chance to speak and not be interrupted and I don't take personal questions when I'm moderating. It's going to be public questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I want to thank the deputy city attorney for pointing out that I failed to have the city clerk provide a overview of next week's agenda. We will have that at this point.
Next week's agenda, on the consent agenda, we have one workers' compensation claim, we have three tort claim appeals, we have four board appointments. For our action items, we have a project budget and resolution for a water main replacement project along 37th Street from Burlingame Road to Gage Boulevard. We have a project budget and resolution for South Kansas Pump Station Phase Two project. We have another project budget and ordinance for the Oakland Wastewater Treatment Plant Bio Filter Project. We have an ordinance addressing the restructuring of the H and D Department. We also have an ordinance for zoning change requested by Core First Bank and Trust, that's for property located at 6202 Southwest 6th Avenue. And then we have a resolution relating to downtown historic districts, and that completes it.
Thank you. That completes the announcement section and public comment, we will now have our executive session if the deputy city attorney would provide the parameters.
The first executive session, I would ask for a motion to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to consult with the assistant city attorney to discuss potential litigation. Present would be the governing body, city manager and legal staff.
Councilwoman Hiller has moved the executive session along those parameters. Councilman Schmidt seconds, it's for 10 minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have nine yes?
Nine having voted yes, we will go into the executive session when the room is clear. And there will be no, no action taken after the executive sessions, the meeting will be adjourned at that point.
Okay. Do it now.
We have come out of the executive session with no action taken. We have a need for another executive session with the, if the deputy wiggle person would state the parameters for it.
All right. The last executive session, I would ask for a motion to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss non-elected personnel with regard to a workers' compensation claim. And the request would include participating the governing body, Mr. Coulson, Shannon Langston, Jackie Russell and myself for 10 minutes.
Councilwoman Delisla, excuse me, Councilwoman Ortiz has moved, Councilwoman Delisla has seconded, to go into an executive session for 10 minutes for those purposes. All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Nine having voted yes, we will go into executive session. Further business before the council, the meeting is adjourned.